I'd like to call the meeting to order, March 28th, year 2025, 11 o'clock. Do we have any special intentions?
The mayor.
Councilor Brennigan, oh, I'm sorry Natalie.
Um, I just wanted to keep our Assistant Director of Communications, Robin Delafour, in our prayers. Uh, her mom passed unexpectedly.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Brennigan, could you please lead us into the pledge? Our pledge, please stand.
My pledge to the allegiance of the United States of America, and to the right of our citizens, one nation, come and down, equal and visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Jamie Elliott, please take the totem. Pastor Elliott is one of the pastors at the Williams Boulevard Baptist Church.
Let's pray together. Lord God, we are privileged to stand before you in any arena, and especially privileged just to stand before you today. And so, Lord, we thank, we're thankful that you love us and that you are a God attuned to the details of our lives and, and we're thankful that you would, uh, stand with us, uh, even in a, in a city council meeting. So, Lord, we ask your blessings on this time, your favor, I pray for the leaders, the men and women who lead us, that you would guide them with wisdom. They would seek you in their decision-making. Lord, use this time to strengthen us as a people and our city. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. We have a quorum this morning. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple of hopefully brief announcements. Uh, the week of April 5th through the 13th is Love the Boot Week here in Louisiana. Uh, we have several things going on, some by office staff during the week. Uh, but if any volunteers want to sign up, go to keeplouisianabeautiful.org. It has all the information on how to become a volunteer. Uh, tomorrow, movies at Muscatolino Playground are being canceled due to inclement weather that's predicted. You know, it's going to be on the field, and if it rains, it's just going to be wet, and we'll reschedule. Uh, the Italian Fest here in Rivertown begins tonight, and will run through Sunday. Uh, haven't heard anything from those organizers of any adjusted schedules as of yet. A, this morning, we had a meeting with the Louisiana Office of Community Development on disaster recovery during Hurricane Francine. People that have had their homes flooded and FEMA evaluators were out. They will be contacted probably in the next several weeks for some grant funding that came through from FEMA to the tune of $117 million for Louisiana, so there's all kind of rules. But I'm just saying that because they're going to call people that are already on the list, on the FEMA list, that had their homes evaluated. So, when you're going to get a text message, an email, and maybe a telephone call. So, it's somebody from Louisiana Office of Community Development, and they should already have all the information. So, would, people know how to do it, don't provide information in case there's any scams or it's just, they will be calling. And some good news for our Recreation Department. Thanks to Coach Bruce Burchard, who, uh, secured a couple of grant fundings for, he got $20,000 for adaptive sports equipment from Musco Lighting and the National Recreation and Park Association, uh, to buy equipment for adaptive sports. And the lighting, Musco Lighting is donating $100,000 in lighting to our skate park. Uh, so that should be going up sometime within this year. It's an in-kind donation where they've just given us the lights, and will benefit where the skate park can now operate a little after dark. And finally, uh, fire graduation is Monday, April 7th, at Church of the King, at 1401 West Esplanade, at 6:00 PM. And Kenner has, uh, 10 new firefighters graduating in that, that class, and it's open to the public if anyone wants to come see. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clerk.
Next up, we have, at the request of the administration, an executive session to discuss the following. James Muhammad versus the City of Kenner, Civil Service Board Docket Number 2021-04. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to adjourn into executive session. Yes, sir.
Yes. Uh, due to a previous attorney-client relationship I've had with the parties in this matter, I will be abstaining for many and all, uh, discussions or voting, so.
Thank you. So, I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by, motion by Councilmember Brennigan, seconded by McKenney, to adjourn into executive session. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Councilmember Lahatt is abstaining.
Eric, please take your seats.
Ma'am clerk?
Yes, sir. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to reconvene from executive session. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six zero. Councilmember Lahad is abstaining. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none. Under the consent agenda, I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to remove item seven A from the consent agenda and place it under item fourteen, items removed from the consent agenda. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under the consent agenda, I have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications, I have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application twenty-four forty-six dash twenty-five, Discovery Health Sciences Foundation doing business as Kenner Discovery to hold a public gathering on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, from eight thirty a.m. to three thirty p.m. for the purpose of a bayou jam and cook-off at thirty-eight thirty-seven Loyola Drive in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three B is application number twenty-four fifty-five dash twenty-five, Custom Cruisers to hold a public gathering on April fifth, two thousand twenty-five, from nine a.m. to two thirty p.m. for the purpose of a car show at the Esplanade Mall in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three C is application twenty-four fifty-four dash twenty-five, Kenner Police Department to hold a public gathering on October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from eleven a.m. to four p.m. for the purpose of a national night out kickoff party at the Punch Train Center parking lot in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three D is application number twenty-four fifty-eight dash twenty-five, Pakistani Community Association to hold a public gathering on April fifth, two thousand twenty-five, from twelve p.m. to four p.m. for the purpose of a community picnic at Kenner City Park in Kenner, Louisiana. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to approve the consent agenda. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage, we have none. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property, we have none. Item ten is opening of bids, we have none. Item eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage, we have none. Item twelve is other ordinances for final passage, we have none. Item thirteen is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item thirteen A is a resolution recognizing the month of April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Kenner. Have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen B is a resolution authorizing a settlement in the claim entitled James Mohammed versus the City of Kenner Civil Service Board docket two thousand twenty-one dash oh four. Have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item three-
Nally. Abstain.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Motion, clerk clarifies, motion passes six zero. Councilmember Lahad is abstaining. I apologize. Item thirteen C is a resolution approving the appointment of Tiffany Riets to the City of Kenner Historic District Design Commission to fill the vacancy of Marlin Gonzalez. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Lahad. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda. I have item fourteen A, previously item seven A, summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty, an ordinance approving the plan of resubdivision of Lot D dash one A and B dash one dash A one dash four into lots D dash one A dash one, D dash one A dash two, and B dash one dash A one dash five, Canes Relay Subdivision in Kenner, Louisiana, case P one twenty-five. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, I mean Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmember Branigan?
Yes, I felt it was important to move this from the consent agenda because with it being on the consent agenda, there's no discussion for the item, and this is a major resubdivision in my district at the Esplanade Mall property, and I felt it needed to be discussed. Basically, it takes controls away from the council and anyone wanting to speak on this item, and after speaking to developers and talking to them about resubdividing this piece of property, it just throws another thorn in the side of the Esplanade property with the amount of things that are out of kilter there. The property has been a problem for the last twenty years, and basically, it's a situation where, given the owner the opportunity just to redevelop pieces of that property, I think would add problems to the Esplanade Mall property when a developer coming in, trying to, you know, develop that property, we need to maximize it for the future of the city of Kenner. Basically, this council and this administration work well together, and the bottom line is that we need to make sure that for our future, we get the most out of the Esplanade Mall property. Another thing that popped up was drainage issues. When you look at the drainage around that mall, and you look at the residential homes that have flooded on numerous occasions, that problem has got to be corrected so that these homes do not continue flooding. Council President, I'd like to ask Jefferson Parish Councilwoman Rita Bohannon and Jerry Bologna from JEDCO to come to the mic. They have some things to say in regards to this, and then I have some more stuff that I would like to say after.
Councilwoman Bohannon?
Good morning, and thank you Councilman Branigan for inviting us this morning. I know that we all get a lot of questions about the mall, like what's happening at the mall. We get asked that every day, particularly if you're elected, you're constantly reminded that the mall is sitting empty, and I think at this point, most people understand that it is privately owned. When I first took office, I thought we just needed to find the right developer to develop it, but now that I've been here a year, and we've sort of done our own internal league of research, I don't think that that's going to be possible. The land is not just owned by multiple owners, it has several leases that are attached to it, there's tax liens, some resolved, some unresolved, we're not sure exactly of all the property interests that may exist. So, over the course of time, I think the best way to sort of resolve the land issues is for the government to purchase it. It may be our only way out of this situation without having it be resubdivided and become a hodgepodge of businesses back there, which could happen. And maybe, you know, if we didn't have any alternatives, that would be the best solution, but I think right now, we are desperately fighting for solutions. I have at least three types of applications that I've put in. One is a FEMA application, there is repetitive loss around the mall, and we've just paid for a twenty-five thousand dollar study that we can quantify what that loss is. If I can demonstrate to FEMA that the loss exceeds the cost of the property, we could get their help in purchasing it and turning some of it into green space, but we could, you know, ultimately sort of resubdivide the rest, or not resubdivide, but we could sell the rest of it for future development. I've also gone to the parish and begged and pleaded for them to shake every couch in the place and fine me eleven million dollars, and the parish president, when she looked at the overhead pictures, was shocked, you know, she knew how big it was, but she was like, oh, this is, could potentially be the largest piece of property that we have on the entire East Bank that could be for development, and she was like, oh, I think subdividing this could be, could spell disaster for future potential progress, and I share that concern with her. So, I've asked her to help me in lobbying for and finding the money. And then the third thing, and Jerry can speak about this more, is the governor actually has a new program, his economic development, and I'm sure you guys saw the news, where they had a new steel company that's coming in. He is actually actively looking for places that would be big enough to base out-of-state companies that he's trying to get wine and dine to come to Louisiana. So, we might just be positioned in a perfect opportunity to lobby for his help, and Jerry can tell you about some meetings that we're setting up, you know, with his offices, but, you know, we're looking for money. In the meantime, I have talked with the mayor, and when I say we, I mean with the mayor as well, I'm not flying solo here, but we, you know, we have talked about doing a study here to do, to develop a master plan, not just for the mall area, but for Lake, for the Lake Town area, where the amphitheater is going to be going. That, that study is going to be about five hundred thousand dollars. This is not a give-me-your-great-drawings kind of study, this is a real master plan development. It would have components about the flooding, water, traffic, all those kinds of things in it, and so it would really give us an idea of what we could develop there that would best suit the city, but I don't think we get there, and George can attest, we've met with, with two of the largest land developers here, the company that currently owns the mall is a developer, and so in a meeting with him and Jerry Bologna, he was, well, you're a development company, why haven't you developed it? Well, they haven't developed it because it's owned by several people, it has all the land issues, it has liens, it has a bunch, and actually financially, they can't do it, and that's the problem we're running into. And we met with Ronnie Mainz and Henry Shane, and those type of developers that are huge Louisiana developers, they said the same thing, we're not going to tie up millions and millions of our dollars for property that will take us who knows how long to accumulate the full ownership of. So, the way to clear the title and to clear the ownership issues that we're having, I've come to the conclusion, the best way to do that is to just, for the government to buy it. So, what I'm asking is that this property sort of not be resubdivided until we've had an opportunity to see if we can pull this rabbit out of the hat, to see if we have the opportunity to purchase it ourselves, and/or have a major developer come that would be willing to invest the time and money that would be needed to secure all the pieces of the property. I, I believe that not just the corpus of the mall is for sale, I believe that there's other pieces of the mall for sale that are around there, and we could actually potentially accumulate, some of these are not listed publicly, so I don't want to, you know, disclose and hurt anyone's business for sure, but there are other parcels around that mall that are for sale, and I think we have an opportunity to accumulate it. So, I'm sort of asking you to just really consider what you want at the mall before making this decision. This doesn't just resubdivide the one portion on Thirty Second Street, Thirty Second Street, right? It also resubdivides the portion on the north side, which would be the Macy's building. You know, I know that there's talks about what could be going in one portion, but I don't know that we have an idea what could be going on the other portion, but what I don't want is that this owner is able to, after sort of not being a great partner, quite frankly, to be able to go and sell off portions to sort of stay fresh with his taxes and leave us as a city with a weird mixture of ownership. It's going to convolute the problem, because now we're going to have an additional owner here, an additional owner on the north side, and while he might be able to, you know, pay his taxes and get current, we're still left holding the bag and with a bunch of mixture of potential businesses back there. So, I'm asking you to maybe reconsider that before you make your decision today. My preference would be that we didn't do it, and we sort of made them sit with it until we can, until we can hopefully purchase it ourselves, but I just want you to know that we are, and this administration is, is fighting to sort of secure that property in a way that we could, you know, protect it for future development. So, with that, I'll bring Jerry up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bohannon, and thank you, Councilman Branigan, and to the council for inviting us here. Jerry Bologna, I serve as president of JEDCO, and it's not typically in our nature to speak for or against a resubdivision request, but I thought what would be helpful is if we just added a little bit of context in terms of our efforts to redevelop the mall, and what are some of the hardships that are leading to that redevelopment, the current ownership aside. We, there, there's a litany of, of developers and end-users that we have shown that property to, everything from IKEA to lifestyle redevelopments to sports facilities, they all love that property. They love it because of its proximity to the airport, its proximity to the interstate, the residential pull, in, in the case of IKEA, where they, where they determine their metrics and traffic patterns, it pulls in the, all the way to the Baton Rouge demographic. So, the mall property is uniquely situated. Every one of those end-users has run into the same problem, they can't do anything substantial there without control of the entire site, and, and it's, it's compounded by the Dillard's having separate ownership, and at a time Macy's was separate ownership, Target has separate ownership, and, and our interest is in keeping that site as large as possible because we totally envision a large-scale redevelopment of that property, and we've been working in concert with the administration and the council on that day in and day out. We are happy throughout the parish to hit singles when we can, but, but our fear is if we hit a single on the Esplanade property, we take a home run off of, off of the board. And, and to, to echo Councilwoman Bohannon's comments, why is it important to gain some control over the site, specifically some government control, would be to clean up all of the, the problems that are running with the property right now, tax liens, just things that go with that property, and, and the ability to gain control of it, clear all of that up, makes it significantly more attractive to developers to come in, because developers and business owners don't want to put their money at risk when it could take them five years, six years, just to get to the starting line to redevelop that property. And I know the councilwoman and the mayor, we've, we, we are exploring every option possible to identify funding, look for potential bonding sources, whatever it may be, to get this site under control so that the city can actually determine the path forward, what, what works best there, what do we want to see in a redevelopment, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have as well.
Councilman Branigan, are you, are you finished with the floor?
Okay. Basically, the concerns that I have with the Esplanade Mall property is, we've been dealing with this for a long time, and we need to make sure that we get the maximum possible sales tax and property tax revenue out of this facility, out of this piece of property, in order, for the future of Kenner. The mall owners came in and basically met with Mayor Glazer and the team, people sitting here, I was in the meeting, and brought us this beautiful presentation, and, and it showed, this is what we're going to do at Macy's, a supermarket on floor one, restaurants and entertainment on floor two, a hotel on floor three. The next thing they talked about was from the Macy's wall to the food court, two hundred apartments inside, parking garage inside. They wanted to leave the food, food court there, because then you have the people there that can support that. Then the next piece was to put the first floor in play with retail, restaurant- Then the next piece was to put the first floor in play with retail, restaurants, whatever. That was 26 months ago. And basically, when I walked out of that meeting, oh, in addition, they also wanted 200 apartments on the northeast corner behind Zia's next to Macy's and 200 apartments on the southwest corner across from the church that's there. After meeting with these people, I was talking to Mayor Glazer, and I said, man, I, I really feel great about this. Man, if they can pull this off, we are going to do very well. And Mayor Glazer, in his comments, said, I'll be sold when I see it developed. And he was right. Because in 26 months, I have dealt with these people on an ongoing basis, and it's hard to get responses out of Winfield. It's hard to get them to do anything. And basically, I don't think that having those plans, and now the plans are gone, are good for the city of Kenner. When potholes developed on Ring Road, and I know the administration has gotten calls for this too, I was getting calls daily. My child blew out a tire. My wife blew out a tire. I blew out a tire. We're, we're suing the city of Kenner because these potholes are, are there. It's not, I would tell the people, look, you need to contact the owners of the property. The city of Kenner is not responsible for the road. In order to stop the potholes from getting, blowing tires out, I went and borrowed 10 cones, put them up like bowling pins to steer the people away from the potholes until they fixed the potholes. This goes on for months. I end up contacting a Kenner company, Emsco, who I know that does pavement maintenance. They give them a bid, $1,500. They fixed the potholes that were, before you get to Target and right when you turn into Target, with hot mixed asphalt, which is the right way to do it. And that my, the potholes that I got them to fix are still in place. They, but a month ago, they fixed some potholes. I guess they used another material, and those are starting to sink. So i- it's a situation where I don't have a lot of confidence in them. Trash around the property, lights on the north end of the property, drive Ring Road at night. It's pitch black. Okay? We've asked, Amy and I have been on Zoom meetings with these people, we've asked, still don't have an answer on the lights. Coincidentally, the Super Bowl does something, and all of a sudden, you see 5,000 light stands out there across the north side of the property. That tells me that the lights don't work. They can't turn them on. So that's a problem. I've decided that I take videos of the problems. I've done this throughout my councilman career, and I'm sending them to the top guy all the way down because I'm tired of dealing with stuff at the S-18 mall in the city of Kenner getting tattooed for it. Why is the development of this mall critical? Sales tax. We rely on sales tax. 70% of our general fund comes from sales tax. 2% comes from property tax. That's a lot of money. I've been told that the mall owners were talking to a school to put in a Macy's building. Do you realize what the negative impact on that is? If they put a school in there, we get no sales tax, no property tax. When you look at what their plan was with a grocery store, retail, hotel, it's, it's unbelievable the amount of money that the city of Kenner would lose in the situation. We want this developed for families to come to Kenner, to live in Kenner. We have to draw younger families back. And the way to do it is put things at the S-18 mall that they want to go to. That's my focus. The other thing that we need to make sure is that the restaurants on the north side of this mall still have the ability to use the excess parking through leases because that's what we need to make sure this development is accessible. To the Hampton Inn, we want you in Kenner. No doubt. There's two lots down the street on 32nd Street. It'd be a great place to be. You get off the interstate heading west, and you're, within two seconds, you're in the parking lot. I am voting against this subdivision, re-subdivision, because I feel it is not the right direction that we need for the future of the city of Kenner. That's it. Look, I may never see this thing redeveloped. I'm old, but I can tell you, I want it on the right track. That's why I pulled it off the consent agenda, so everybody knows how I feel about this property. I thank Councilman Bohannon for putting $500,000 up to do a major study for this property. That's a big deal. I hope that my fellow council members understand from what I've said where I'm coming from and where we need to go to fix this 20-year problem that basically Katrina gave us. Anybody has any questions? I'm all ears.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Well, everybody said I agree with everything that's been said today, and I just sat here and said nothing, but I'm going to tell you that I agree with everything that was said here today. I would vote against it if I was in your shoes, and I wouldn't entertain anything until they paid the $321,000 in back taxes. So that, that should be the first thing that this company does, is pay, the first thing is pay that back, or pay it, not just pay it back, pay their taxes before you even entertain this agenda item. And that's it.
Mayor, you remember when we talked to Felix Resnick 15 times between July 1 of '22 and when this property was sold? And he told both of us that the taxes were going to be, everything was going to be squared up, everything was going to be clean, and basically, it's not. And I totally agree with you. There's a lot of street boundaries that can be fixed with $321,000.
Councilwoman D., do you have anything to add? Councilman LaHatt?
Yeah. Thank you, council chair. And thank you, George. I have a procedural-type question and a matter of information, really. On the Department of Planning, Land Use and Zoning report, the case number is listed, the council chairman is listed, and the council district's listed as D. Dunn District 1 for Cane's Brulee. There's no doubt this is District 4. So, and a matter of information, when, you know, Chris Lewinsky, I know you're temporary and you're acting for Wendell, you know, that situation happened two months ago, but why, does anyone know why Councilwoman Dunn is listed? I guess, Ms. D., did you receive this? Because I didn't know anything about this either. And I don't, maybe we have to clarify, or maybe, look, maybe it's something that was inadvertent, and that's fine if that's the answer, but there maybe needs to be a procedural mechanism we need. Because I think there's an error here is what the council, council district listed on the planning board report of the re-subdivision. I had no information on it. I don't see it on my email records anywhere. Could have missed something? Yeah, very, very possible. If anybody can answer that question right now, why Ms. D. is listed on this land use and zoning report? That'd be great. If we don't have the answer right now, I just, that's fine. We can figure that out later. But does anyone know? Current director?
That was just an omission during the creation of the report. That's all.
Okay, so it was just a, just a, just an omission? Okay.
We just overlooked it.
Okay. And maybe we need to, this is another procedure thing we can talk about with the council, but I didn't really know about this until recently. So I think we need to really explore these kind of things being sent out well in advance of any of the hearing before the, the planning board. And, because I just, I recall with, one of the last zoning issue I had in my district with the church, you know, Wendell must have called me about 85 times about that thing. And I knew about it for eight months. So I just, maybe we need some, just some procedural things to help you or just to help us better understand things going forward. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilman?
Yes.
Just to advise you that all of these public meetings you can find on the city of Kenner website as it relates to the planning and zoning, BZA, and historic design.
Yeah, I know that.
So, so all of those and the agendas and what's going to be discussed. So this, this is on there.
Yeah, okay.
Councilwoman McKenney?
Thank you, Council President. I guess my main question is, I want to understand what the, the current owners, like, I'm surprised about the back taxes. I thought my understanding was that they could not actually purchase the property, like, they had to get, in order to purchase the property, they had to get up to speed. Or not get up to speed, but like, had to pay off the previous back taxes. So my main question is, and I guess this is for Liz, is how far are they, like, how, how much taxes is, is, do they still owe, like, the back taxes from 18 years ago or 20 years ago?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So primarily, the amount stems from that 1992 one, which is $190,000 there. In addition to that, they have not paid their 2023 or 2024 taxes. So they are, since they bought the property, they have been delinquent in their taxes as well, plus the 1992 was never resolved. So I heard the same thing that y'all heard, that they were supposed to pay, you know, they had a whole thing going on. We never received payment, so.
Okay, so, so I guess that just...
Yeah, taxes stay with the property. So if, when you buy a property, you should resolve any old taxes with who you're buying it from, because if not, now you're on the hook for it.
You're on the hook for it, right. Yes, okay, so that was never resolved.
Correct.
But they, they did purchase the property, so it obviously, now it's their obligation as the property owners. Okay. So, and now they're coming for, for this development, which I agree with Councilman Branigan 100%. You know, we want, and, and as well as Councilwoman Bohannon and all the other, and Mr. Bologna, like, we need to keep this all together. You know, the potential for the, for the S-18 mall is obviously huge, but it's not huge if we have, you know, small segments of, of land to sell. So I, you know, I'm going to obviously vote against this in, for the interest of District 4, the interest of all of Kenner. So, thank you.
Councilman Womack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Procedurally, it's my belief that we have some, some problems with what we have here before us today. The legislation, in my opinion, appears on the consent agenda. This is a fairly big issue, and I don't know why it's appearing on the consent. I don't think it should appear on the consent. I think there's some flaw in our procedure for that to occur. Secondarily, the heading of it, I think it's not clear, and it could, could be written a lot clearer. It, it refers to Cane's Brulee. There's no mention of the mall. I, I, I think it should. I think that's a flaw in how it's written. We need to be more transparent, especially in this process and for this legislation, in my opinion. That's procedurally, those issues that I have. Substantively, after hearing from several people, Councilwoman Arida Bohannon, and I appreciate you coming today, Mr. Jerry Bologna, thank you too for coming today, and Councilman George Branigan for enlightening us on a lot of issues that you, you spoke of. This re-subdivision apparently has some issues with it and, and appear to be problematic, and therefore, I will be voting against it. Thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. I'm just going to be real brief because Councilman Womack pretty much just said everything my thoughts were. So I commend Councilman Branigan for his diligence. I appreciate the, the mayor's stance on this and appreciate Councilwoman Bohannon and Mr. Bologna coming and giving us their comments as well. So, yeah, this is definitely something that I will not vote for, or pardon me, I will be voting against. Thank you. Easy for me to say.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Oh, Liz, on the three, it's 321,000?
Yes, about that.
Okay. So 2024 is how much?
It's about $53,000, $52,000 for 2023, and then that 1992 is like $191,000.
$191,000. You said 70 for 23?
78.
78, okay. All right. I'm good.
Last but not least, let everybody look at this for a second. This has absolutely nothing to do with the mall, the structure itself. So everybody, I know people's going to go outside, wait, they're going to do something with the mall. They're not doing anything with the mall. They're actually doing it with just the parking lot. So this is why I will be supporting Councilman Branigan, and I will not be supporting this legislation. Thank you.
All council members in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Mr. Brown?
You are ready for public comment, correct?
Yes, sir, you have the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Richard Brown. I live in District 4. I'm also president of Citizens for a Better Kenner, and I wanted to say I personally oppose this agenda item, but also the Board of Directors of Citizens for a Better Kenner also unanimously opposes it. And we hope that you will vote no for many of the reasons stated. There's probably no need for me to go into any more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Stacy Alexandra?
Hello, Stacy Alessandro. I have a question. Are any of the mall owners here today, or any representatives here from the mall? Okay, so that kind of tells me that something I already knew is that the owners of this mall don't care about Kenner at all. They didn't care enough to show up here for this. They don't care enough to maintain their property. They don't care enough to have proper lighting, to have any type of meaningful development. And apparently, they don't care about paying their taxes. So they are a very, very poor neighbor for us. I don't trust them, and I'm asking you guys not to do them any favors. George, what you said about the Super Bowl coming here, I mean, that was our time to shine. You know, that was a really big deal for the entire area. And when I drove through that parking lot, when our Super Bowl guests, workers, whoever was using that mall, whoever had the contract, all I saw, in addition to the portable lights, was rows of portlets. It looked awful. Why can't they have plumbing inside of that building? I mean, they, they do nothing. They just let it sit here and rot. So, you know, and we have this process in, in place for re-subdivisions, and it's not a rubber stamp. There's a reason we have this process. It's for you guys to thoughtfully review everything and see what's best for the city, the neighbors, everything as a whole. I see no pluses in this, and I see everything bad about it for the reasons everybody else has mentioned. So there's been lots of rhetoric in the past year, some other people doing studies conveniently at election time, past mayors. Nothing ever gets done. Nobody believed those. They weren't sincere, nothing. But I can tell you personally that I've talked to Ms. Arida Bohannon, and I'm very excited about what she has planned for the mall. And her fingerprints are all over the city. If you want to see, you can see what's happening at Megas Park today because of her. So when she tells us that she's doing something, you can actually see that in place, like, it's going to get done. If she says it's going to get done, it's going to get done. So between her and Mayor Glazer and this administration, I really think that they really are going to have a plan, and I would hate to see that plan potentially ruined by re-subdividing this lot. And so my last question will be in the last 20 seconds. How does this mall keep getting sold over and over and Kenner's taxes aren't being paid? How does that even happen?
I couldn't, I would, been texting George back and forth just now on Felix, the previous owner of the mall. When he purchased the mall, he didn't know there was liens on it, back taxes owed. So he was supposedly supposed to sue the title company, then missed it. And it was supposed to be paid when that's ever resolved. So I guess it's not resolved at this point, so.
Okay, that makes perfect sense.
But it, it just keeps getting sold, and I guess the people that bought it knew that there was back taxes, but probably knew that it was in litigation in some part of United States.
Gotcha.
Councilman Raggitt?
But that was for the 191,000.
Yeah, so...
That's, that's not for 24 and 23.
No, what the city, you know, the city gives our residents and, and business owners, property owners, three years to pay before we take it to tax sale. So, you know, we're bringing the 2022 to tax sale this year. So if not, you know, a wild guess, next year they'll pay because they don't want it, another lien on it, and so they know that they have the time to do it. Now, interest is accruing. They're not...
Now, interest is accruing, they're not, they're gonna end up paying more when they do that, but, you know, that, that's what they're doing.
I mean, I can understand how the ninety-two taxes, because he's suing-
Correct.
The prior company, you know, to, to get his money back that they messed up on, but for the twenty-three, twenty-four, not to pay the property taxes, that's a lot of money, and, uh, it's frustrating. Um, I have one more comment. You know, we talked about a school, they talking to a school or whatever, until death do us part, there will not be a school in Macy's, as long as I'm involved in the city of Kenner.
Madam Clerk?
All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, no? Favor, are you in favor, Councilman Brannigan?
You have got a favor for it.
All council members opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Wait, hold on.
Say-
Start over.
Please start over. Madam Clerk, please start over.
All council, it's okay. All council members in favor, please say aye. All council members opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion fails, zero seven, all council members are opposed. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-two, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from MES Service Company LLC to supply rain gear as needed in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one fifty-five, and an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All council members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-three, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Pilot Construction and Maintenance Incorporated to remove, furnish, and install two fountains at Kenner City Park in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one fifty-eight, and an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-four, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Roofing Solutions LLC for fast-bender community center roof repairs, in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-eight sixty, and an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All council members in, Councilmember Wilmot?
Councilwoman Wilmot.
Thank you. I just, I don't know, I don't see Mark here today. Is, is someone else here to discuss this a little bit? The roofing issue in particular, a hundred and sixteen thousand, that's what I'm focusing in.
On fast-bender?
Yes.
Um, yes, so, as you know, we don't, we do not have a city hall, and, uh, for a long period of time, you as the council haven't had a home. Um, and part of this project, fast-bender to replace the roof on it, is to go ahead and provide you with the rest of the offices for you and your staff, so that this is, it's gonna take a while for us to rebuild city hall. So, this will be your interim location until we have rebuilt city hall. So, the roof becomes critically important, it's, it's the base. We have a lot of leaking at the, the rear portion of that building, so that will alleviate that. It's a flat surface building, so it's gonna give us a little bit so that that water's not staying on top of the roof.
Are they putting a pitch?
Yes, sir.
And that's, okay, that, that explains-
Yes, sir.
-why the, the added cost.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, that's, 'cause it's, having a flat roof, and then you're putting a pitch on it, it creates a lot more construction, and that, that, that explains the difference.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, that's all. Thank you.
All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-five, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Tran-Tex Transportation Products of Texas Incorporated to supply sign poles, brackets, and miscellaneous sign supplies, in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-eight sixty-six, and an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-six, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Vulcan Incorporated, doing business as Vulcan Signs, to supply aluminum sheet and sign blanks as needed in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one fifty-six, and an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Beverly Construction Company LLC to supply batcher dirt and sand on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-eight seventy, and an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Carlo Ditta LLC to supply ready-mixed concrete as needed in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-five dash sixty-eight sixty-two, and an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine, an ordinance approving amendment number five to the engineering agreement with Digital Engineering and Imaging Incorporated dated March twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, regarding Loyola Drive and I-ten interchange connection to the new terminal of the New Orleans International Airport, state project number H period zero one one six seven zero, federal aid project number H zero one one six seven zero, city of Kenner project number PW dash two thousand and nineteen dash four dash AR, to increase the not-to-exceed amount by twenty-five thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, and to extend the term of the agreement by two years to March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven, for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn.
Mr. Gonzalez, could you please elaborate on this?
Uh, the firm, Digital Engineering was retained several years ago to perform, uh, construction management services for the DDI. The work on I-ten and Loyola is a state project, okay, but the city felt necessary for Digital Engineering to be involved with the work, because the work included some city streets, like Loyola, traffic signals at thirty and thirty-first Street. So, they have been performing construction management services. The project seems like it's complete, but in reality, it's not complete. There is a punch list, okay, that has not been taken care of. So, the DOTD has not yet formally approved the project, therefore, we need to continue with the services for Digital Engineering so that, you know, so that they can be available to discuss any punch list items, and also, we, the city also needs to enter into a contract with the DOTD regarding some property, property transfers out there, so we still need their services, and the cap increase, I believe, is twenty-five thousand dollars. Hopefully, this thing will all be finished within the next months or two.
And that's what the C is, on the hook board, for twenty-five thousand dollars?
Correct. Increase the cap by twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Councilman Wilmot, if you could. Madam Clerk?
In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty, an ordinance approving a cooperative insider agreement with the State of Louisiana Facility Planning and Control, FPNC, project number fifty dash MF one dash two four dash oh one, for the Roosevelt Boulevard improvements from Airline Drive to West Metairie Avenue, planning and construction in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred dollars for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-one, an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with Geographic Computer Technologies LLC, to provide geographic information services, increasing the agreement amount by fifty thousand dollars, and extending the term of the agreement for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-two, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Madden Gulf Coast LLC to supply asphaltic paving materials on an as-needed basis, in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-five dash sixty-eight sixty-four, and an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen L is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-three, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Monopoly Rental Properties to supply masonry supplies on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-five dash sixty-eight sixty-three, and an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen M is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-four, an ordinance approving amendment number two to the engineering agreement with MSMM Engineering LLC, to increase the resident inspection not-to-exceed amount of the agreement associated with the wastewater treatment plant number three, clarifiers one through four, rehabilitation project by ninety-five thousand dollars for the Department of Wastewater. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen N is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-five, an ordinance authorizing utilization of existing state contract number four four zero 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 three zero eight two six with WW Granger Incorporated, for the purchase of industrial maintenance, repair, and operational MRO supplies, on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen O is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-six, an ordinance approving renewal number one to the agreement with Waste Pro of Louisiana Incorporated to provide a twenty-yard open container with roll tarp cover for waste tire processing services for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen P is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven, an ordinance approving amendment number five to the agreement with ITS Regional LLC dated July third, two thousand and eighteen, for traffic engineering-related services on an as-needed basis to increase the not-to-exceed amount by thirty thousand dollars for the Public Works Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen Q is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from EBE Fence Company Incorporated to furnish and install fencing as needed citywide, in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-four dash sixty-eight fifty-nine, and an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen R is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from PCV Construction LLC to remove, furnish, and install rearset doors at Buddy Lawson Gym in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one fifty-seven, and an amount not to exceed seven thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen S is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from CDX Construction LLC for the restroom facility at Buddy Lawson Playground, in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-eight sixty-one, and an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm just looking for an explanation on this one. It's restroom facility, it's three hundred and seventy thousand, just, if we can have an explanation, somebody?
Um, I'm happy to provide a partial explanation, at least. I mean, you can see the bid documents in there on, on the total cost, but the preliminary estimate was, was this dollar amount. Councilwoman Dunn is using her council funds to primarily fund this project.
Okay, if we, we, my, my concern, though, is, is it's a restroom, and we're spending three hundred and seventy.
It's designed to standard, that is the going rate.
Okay, the, the, as far as, I mean, it's a, it's not a remodel, then, it's gonna be an add-on, I would presume.
Completely new facility.
That's why, okay, that makes sense. I, that's what I needed to know, thank you.
There is no, there is no permanent bathroom currently outside on the field area at Buddy Lawson. The only, only permanent bathrooms are inside the gymnasium.
So, this is a completely new facility?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
I got a question. Ms. Natalie, um, as far as the bidder goes, okay, what type of insurance that they have to provide the city, that, you know, is it one million dollars insurance, two, three, four, five, ten?
Give me a minute, I'll pull up the bid documents, and it'll have the requirements in there. Do you wanna address it?
Generally, insurance requirements for a construction project like this would have a couple of components. There'd be a GL policy that's usually around a million, this might have, well, this would be only a million, uh, based on the construction cost. You've also got, uh, builder's risk, and then workers' comp. Uh, the other policy, or the other protection that you guys would have is a payment and performance bond, that would, uh, be used if the contractor went belly up or didn't pay a subcontractor. So, that's our normal suite of insurances that are required, I'm not sure which one you're looking to know more about.
No, 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 I, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, um, I know we didn't have many responses.
Ah.
Okay, and I was wondering if we set our insurance premiums so high that we lose lower bidders? You know, that, people that don't have five million dollars in policy, you know, that, so they, therefore, we lose that, and that's why we come up with a, a cinder block restroom, that even though it's an ADA approved, it really, that's no more than just handles just put there, and accessibility, for three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I, you mean, you start going, that, that's a hundred dollars a block.
Councilman, I can-
A block, cinder block don't cost a hundred dollars.
Councilman, I can address the insurance issues. Um, as you're familiar, when we went to do the demolition of Green Lawn Concession, we went through that bid process several times because insurance was an issue. So, when we do not, when we are not successful in obtaining bidders, based on the recommendations from the city attorney and third parties that we utilize to evaluate risk, um, we do evaluate the situations on an individual basis to try to accomplish the project, and so sometimes we make accommodations if we feel like we can still, you know, not put the city in a bad situation.
Yeah, I, I mean, like, for Green Lawn, we had five million dollars insurance policy that was out there for destruction, that could've, was, the building that was afraid to fall down by itself, and there was no other structures around there or anything like that. I know we had an asbestos abatement that we had to do with the structure, I totally understand that, but we did weigh, there was many bidders out there that were, have been much lower, but they were pretty much denied because they didn't have a five million dollar insurance policy. And that's why I was wondering, with this structure right here, at three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a concrete restroom, you know, we're over here, it's a brick, gold brick house here, but on the other hand, it's, it's a lot. I know before, I know, look, years ago, they built concession stands for a half a million dollars. And those things are rotten right now, and there's nothing left to them. So, um, it's just a concern, and- So it's just a concern and I know it's a going price, but I was just wondering if insurance levels were set so high that we couldn't get some other lower bidders in it, that's all.
If I can, we had seven bidders, just so the public knows too, there were seven bidders on this project, so it wasn't like it was, you know, only one or two, and they were the lowest responsive bid, so.
Well, that astonishes me. Councilwoman D?
I just want to understand, a hundred thousand of this money actually came from Senator Garrett Smith, and I personally had it sat down with him and on his way out, he allowed me a hundred thousand dollars for recreation. And so that's where a hundred thousand dollars of that money came from, so.
At least we got some help, you know, from the other-
Yes.
We got some, so we are going to be on a hook for three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But thank everyone.
Yes.
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen T is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-one, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid to receive grass cutting in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-eight seventy-seven and an amount not to exceed $450,000 annually for the Department of Public Works. Have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Mr. Chairman, we've received a request from the administration to amend this item to add HNO Investments LLC as the vendor. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Councilwoman Wilmot?
Just the clarification, you said to amend, and we're replacing?
When it was submitted, did it not have a vendor? So they're adding the vendor in as HNO Investments LLC. That came from the legal department.
Okay. Okay, that's good, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Brown, would you like to speak on the amendment? Or you want to speak on the legislation?
Right, Richard Brown, Sessions Lane in District Four, and you just raised the point I was going to raise. I was going to ask, who is the vendor in item fifteen T? Because no vendor was named and it's not named on the supporting documents either. I understand how you filled that in. But I'm also curious because I know that on the agenda for first reading to be taken up at the next meeting, there's another contract for grass cutting to be awarded. Is there any connection between those two items?
Hey, Richard, no, there isn't. The other one is for code enforcement grass cutting contract. So separate one, the Public Works contract is for our parkways and other properties within the City of Kenner.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. But one other comment about the grass cutting. I'm also a resident of and active in the Holly Heights Civic Association, Holly Heights, Chateau Terre, and Westwood, and the city does a pretty good job of cutting the grass at the subdivision entrance. We have a median, actually two islands that are subdivision entrance. The first big island has the subdivision sign, trees, plants, but behind it is a second island, which is also a median. The last time, just the other day, just a day or two ago, when the city cut the grass for those two islands, they did come back and clean up the grass clippings from the first island, because at first they were just in the street. Several of us noticed that the grass clippings were just blown all over the street. They did clean that up, but they did not clean up the grass clippings around the second island. And I just would like for whoever the appropriate official is, probably somebody in Public Works or Councilman Branigan, somebody, just please try to ensure that the grass cutters or the cleanup crews do clean up the grass clippings. Otherwise, they do a good job and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rash.
Mr. Brown, normally when HNO cuts the grass, they have a truck, a vacuum truck that goes around, and something must have happened yesterday because down Chateau Boulevard, when I was going to the, leaving this morning, I noticed grass along the curbing too. So something must have happened yesterday. We're going to have to look into it.
Can I say something?
Councilmember Brennan?
I think the mayor's going to say what I'm going to, so I yield to the mayor.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Sir? You know, we're going to say this, I like this poll, I can't see him.
I had it put there for a reason.
All right, as y'all probably remember, last summer, y'all voted on the same contract and it was awarded to some small company that probably didn't have a lot of insurance and they couldn't do the job. So they informed us that they can't do it. So we're under an emergency contract. HNO must have had trouble because I don't know who, that's who's got the contract for, I mean, that's one, two, there's four responsive bidders and seven non-responsive bidders, everywhere from three seventy-four to four eighty-three. And they had a, what's always broken, the street sweeper. They had a street sweeper that came hours after and helped a little bit. But that's why this is, another grass cutting contract is back on so quickly where the company out of somewhere down the bayou couldn't do the job. So they told us and we put it out for bid again.
That's understandable. I mean, that's a no-brainer.
They bid off a little bit more than they could chew at the time. Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you, and I thought the mayor was also going to say, my office, and I'm assuming yours as well, we were receiving a lot of calls and contact about the medians and the parks and different things and how overgrown they were. I'm assuming part of this cleanup, the equipment makes sense, but I think it was so high and they were just trying to get caught up from the lack of work that had been done for a couple of weeks, so, thank you.
And weeds are growing faster than the grass right now. Councilman?
I think Ms. Fowler wants to speak.
Oh, Ms. Amy?
Councilman, yeah, what happened was the previous contractor, they probably got through one-third of the city and they just quit. So it kind of left us in a lurch in terms of that. So this will allow us and give us the ability to get back on track with everything. There may have been some instances where we had some of our department employees going to kind of pick up some of the other things as well. So, but with the approval of this contract, we'll get back on our regular grass cutting contract. As you know, we had an emergency contract for that brief period of time and they did their very last grass cut. We were saving it until last week so that we could have coverage throughout until your approval of this contract.
Correct, you're crap, absolutely correct. Stacey?
Hi. Did y'all already vote on the amendment?
Yes.
So we're on the amendment right now still?
No.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes or no?
Still on the amendment.
Still on the amendment, okay. So regarding the amendment, can, I'm not really clear on why there is no name here. Are you saying that there's no name on the agenda right now, but y'all are going to add the name of HNO on here so it reads that they're accepting the lowest responsive bid from HNO for whatever this is? Is that what's happening? Or was there no vendor's name on the actual bid? I'm just asking for a little clarification.
So we were in a time crunch and it's an emergency, so what they did was so that we could get it on for first reading. It was put out for bid, the bid was selected in the interim, so we had first reading, that's why you didn't have any backup, and then we just selected HNO or through the, they were the lowest responsive bidder. So that's why I believe legal wasn't able to get it on this agenda within the deadline time. Is that correct?
So we just, like today, decided on who the vendor was going to be?
No.
The bid closed last week and then once they were deemed their most responsive bidder, we submitted that information, so it would be added to the legislation before the council voted.
Okay, so I think somebody was saying that we received like multiple bids or whatever, but I thought I heard like the lowest bid was like three hundred and seventy thousand?
Yes, but, so the way the bids work is we give them quantities and they give pricing, but we're not going to always sign an agreement for that amount. If our cap is, you know, a certain amount, then we will go to that cap for our contract. That doesn't mean they're going to use it all, they bill us depending on what they cut. So if they don't cut that much or they cut more, then, you know, it's based on the cut prices. You know, they're not getting a flat rate when they go out and cut, it's based on the square footage of where they're cutting and the cost for that.
So when you're evaluating these different bids, you're going by the square, the cost per square foot for the cut?
Correct, yes, so we use the same square footage across the board and it's whatever their cost is for, per square foot, yes, lowest responsive bidder.
And so is this contract, like, citywide?
Yes.
Okay, so this is for the entire city except for maybe a couple other things that y'all are going to be voting on later?
So the only thing different is that code does cuts, you know, for properties, that's a separate contract that kind of Amy talked about, that Mr. Brown asked about earlier. So, but as far as city-owned property, yes.
Okay, so that's all I had on the amendment. I am going to want to ask a couple of questions when y'all get to the actual voting.
All right, George? Councilmember Brennan?
And Amy, basically, you know, we always get into a situation like in the month of March where we're on different time schedules as the grass starts growing more, the cuts increase.
Yes, sir.
So that could contribute to the grass being a little higher too, because if you're on a less frequent cut schedule, then in April, I think that's when the cut schedule starts getting implemented to where it's cut more frequently.
Yes, sir, during high grass season, and then you have to take in the factors of weather. If the grass is too wet, if they're running heavy equipment on it, you don't want them to tear up the parkways or things of that nature, so.
On the amendment, councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Back to your original motion as amended. Do you want to speak, Stacey?
Yeah, please. Okay, so just, you know, I'm kind of going to speak as a member of Citizens for Better Kenner on this part and maybe the Holly Heights Civic Association, because we do get questions from some people, like Mr. Brown was talking about, a lot of times, sometimes they'll do a great job cutting in front of our subdivision and then sometimes it's overgrown for a long period of time. Sometimes they're just blowing the stuff out into the streets, and I'm not just talking about in front of our subdivision, I see this in other places too. And I know that the city has an ordinance, or at least we did, on leaf blowers, that you're not supposed to blow stuff into the street. So I was wondering, A, if we could maybe make this new contractor aware of that regulation so they don't do whatever this current contractor is doing as of like a few days ago? We can let them know, please not to do that. And then also, just two other things, if there's any way to coordinate the schedule down west Esplanade by the canals, because I see a lot of times they'll cut the canal sides, but then, I don't know if it's the same company or two different companies, but the canal sides get cut, but then the grass on the top is long for a long time after. And I mean, part of the reason we cut the grass is for aesthetics and it just doesn't look good when one part is cut and the other one's not, if there could be some kind of coordination there. It's a parish that cuts that? So is there any way that we could talk to them about coordinating?
Ms. Fowler?
I'm going to let Jose take that one.
With regards to grass cutting along drainage canals, those are parish contracts. As a matter of fact, I think they have two contracts. One contract cuts the slope of the canal bank, the slopes of the canals, and the other contract cuts the canal bank itself. So this particular company will not be cutting grass along the canal banks. They'll be cutting grass citywide on mediums and other public roadways, not private property. There is another contract that is going to be acted on at the next council meeting with Ramelli, that is with code enforcement for private property grass cutting. As far as specifications for grass cutting, we have all the specifications in the world as far as being able to clean up after grass cutting operations. We're probably just going to have to talk to the contractor and enforce those specifications a little better.
Thank you. And my last question is, is there anywhere like that citizens can see the actual grass cutting schedule? So like, you know, sometimes whenever we had a lot of rain, the grass might be getting high and we're like, well, I wonder when they're going to cut the grass. Can we like see so we know, oh, it's getting cut tomorrow or whenever that might be?
We can work on that. There is no such schedule. Normally it's roughly twenty-six cuts per year, okay? So in other words, we cut roughly every two weeks. In some periods during the rainy season, when we do get a lot of rain and the grass grows a little faster, then we may cut more, but overall it's roughly twenty-six cuts per year and there is no such schedule. If we get constant rain, the grass cutters are not going to be out there cutting grass. So we'll wait until dry weather comes and we'll cut grass, but roughly it's twenty-six cuts a year.
So they're the ones who decide when the grass is ready to be cut and then they just-
No, no, Public Works decides, but if we have, you know, for instance, the rainy season is going to come in May, April, and May. If we get continuous rain every day, they may not be cutting that area on that specific week, they may have to wait till the next week to cut the grass. But no, there is no such schedule, okay, that we can provide to the general public at this time, but our Public Works Department sets the schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. That really, it answered a lot of questions and I appreciate those answers.
And look, there were a number of bidders, there were four bidders on this particular contract. HNO was the contractor that had performed services for the city for a number of years prior to the last contract that we had, just for a short term, because that prior contract was not able to execute and they demanded to get out of the contract. But HNO has been doing a good job for the city for the past few years.
And additionally, Public Works and myself, anytime we award these types of contracts, we like to sit down with the individual and the company that was awarded with it and we give them the big picture. And I think maybe the first company couldn't handle the big picture. HNO was more than competent to do so, but we will also be meeting with them to make sure that they understand the scope of the project and what their job is to do, although they have done a fine job in the past and I don't anticipate any problems. But it's certainly, we also, Public Works sets a scheduled meeting with them as well to sit down to make sure if there's any questions or concerns.
But do they actually, are they the ones that pick up the trash when they're cutting the grass or is that a separate?
They should be picking up the trash, yes.
They do that as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The scope of the agreement requires that they pick that up.
If you wish to obtain a copy of-
Not from garbage.
The specifications, we'll be glad to give you a copy of the specifications.
You've answered everything, I appreciate it.
But yes, they got to pick up debris, they got to pick up litter.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Branigan?
Stacey, they do pick the trash up. I saw the guys cutting yesterday or the day before. They got a little five-gallon bucket on the front lawn mower and before they run over the piece of trash, they pick it up as they're going along. That's why we don't have paper and all kinds of trash all over the medians right after the cut. It happens when people throw stuff out of windows a couple of days later.
Madam Clark?
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen U is a resolution accepting as complete the contract with Frantise Horticultural Services Incorporated dated July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four regarding renovations to the splash pad for the Department of Parks and Recreation. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance approving a policy for the private sale of police dogs no longer needed for police work for the Kenner Police Department. Sixteen B is an ordinance approving amendment number two to the lease agreement with US Copy Incorporated for photocopy, fax, printing, equipment, maintenance, parts, labor, and supplies for a term of three years, increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $30,500 annually for a new not-to-exceed amount of $80,000 for all City of Kenner departments. eighty thousand dollars for all City of Kenner departments. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Galls LLC to supply uniforms, badges, and accessories for Kenner Fire Department in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-five eighty-five, and an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars annually for the Kenner Fire Department. Item sixteen D is an ordinance authorizing a media monitoring subscription service agreement with TVEYES Incorporated, a sole-source provider, and the amount of three thousand six hundred dollars annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen E is an ordinance approving an agreement with Vanderbrook and Co- and Company LLC certified public accountants for financial consulting, and an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen F is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with Friends of Discovery for the long-term use of parcel E of the Loyola Track University City Subdivision, City of Kenner property being owned by the City of Kenner. Item sixteen G is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Husbands for Hire Construction LLC to provide guardrail maintenance in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-eight seventy-two, and an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for the Public Works Department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with the firm of Meyer Engineers L- LTD regarding a professional architectural and engineering services associated with the design, construction, administration, and supplementary services related to two-story fire station number thirty-five facility, and an amount not to exceed eight hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the Kenner Fire Department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Parish of Jefferson to provide funding for inclusive playground equipment and lighting at Megas Park, and an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Item sixteen J is an ordinance accepting the quote received from Serpentix Conveyor Co- Corporation to purchase emergency shutdown switches and miscellaneous parts for the sludge conveyor system, in the amount of five thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents for the wastewater department. Item sixteen K is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from USA Blue Book to purchase one all-weather sample bundle in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash two-nine-nine-nine, and the amount of nine thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty cents for the Department of Wastewater. Item sixteen L is an ordinance approving an agreement with Prince Dump Truck Services LLC for work relating to clearing and grubbing of land, grading slash spreading of materials, and excavation on an as-needed basis with an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for various city departments. Item sixteen M is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Ramelli Janitorial Services Incorporated to provide grass cutting and debris removal in accordance with bid number twenty-five dash sixty-eight seventy-six, and an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Inspection and Code Enforcement Department. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilman Brennan again.
Uh, yes. I just wanted to let the, uh, people that use Megas Park, uh, the facility there is closed for the next two weeks, because Councilwoman Rita Bohannon is adding equipment to that, uh, facility, uh, to the, uh, northwest quadrant of it. So we're trying to keep people off of it, so no one gets hurt doing this construction. Um, also, lighting will be coming in the future shortly. Uh, I wanna thank Natalie Newton and Charles Alon, uh, for working with Bruce, uh, Burchard with what he has got, the grants that the mayor talked about. Uh, it's a, uh, guy that I used to coach with back in the mid-nineties at Bertolino, and, uh, he is still active and helping the city of Kenner out, and, uh, we appreciate those efforts tremendously. Thank you.
Mayor Glazer?
Thank you. Just, I failed under fifteen I to thank Rep. Joe Stagni for the monies on Roosevelt Boulevard improvements from Airline Drive to West Metairie. He was instrumental in that. And, uh, I know everyone's heard about his amphitheater and all that kinda stuff that, you know, we've, we're trying to get built in Lake Town, and dealing with all these regulatory, federal, and state agencies, it's just, it's, it boggs everything down. Uh, so when you voted on fifteen F today, which is the four hundred thousand dollars in dirt from Beverly, that's dedicated pretty much, most of it to Lake Town. It's monies that was given to us from the state, uh, for this project. So that's what that one was. The last one, in first reading, the dump truck services for spreading is also most, mostly for this Lake Town project. And up until this meeting, we were sitting around waiting for permits to put the dirt out there. Well, we just received, you want the glory, or no? You can have it.
We got our permit.
You got a permit, yes.
Well, but wait, before we get too excited, this is a preload permit.
Nine mo- it's gonna, you're gonna have twenty-two feet of dirt sitting for, what, nine months? I think he's, they-
Yeah, minimally six.
Six to nine months.
Look, in my world, six, and the mayor's re- world of reality, probably nine.
Yes.
But it's exciting news, so. We literally just got the text while we're sitting here.
So I guess after next meeting, when we can start, we can start hauling, and I guess they can start spreading once they, two weeks, so we'll see.
Thank you, sir. Also, um, to remind everybody that registration's still open for baseball and softball. We're looking for more young, youngsters to come out there. Uh, it's gonna be an exciting season. I will be coaching again for the seventh and eights. Um, and this year, all the, the games and all will be held at Bertolino, if I'm not mistaken. So we'll use, uh, green lawn and other facilities as practice fields. But all the games will be at Bertolino, where I got restrooms, rest, um, refreshments and everything else that'll be out there. So it'll be a definite upgrade from what we had in the previous years. I'm excited about it. Bring them out, bring the kids out. Um, I'm excited to be working with them. Thank you.
Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider or remove from a table position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, go up there. Please state your name and, um, what district you live in.
Uh, my name is Donald Luminais. I spell L-U-M-I-N-A-I-S. I live at five oh one East Loyola Drive in Kenner, Louisiana. I'm coming here to, uh, to ask for help. Uh, I've had four cars demolished in front of my house since I've lived there. My neighbor had a car hit within the last, uh, month, and my next neighbor down the street had a car side-swiped, uh, within the last week. I've had five animals killed within the last week, uh, right in front of my house. Uh, the Kenner Police Department has responded every time that we call in a very highly professional way. But, uh, the street is like an interstate going through there. Uh, at nighttime, it seems like they drive fifty miles an hour down this street, which is a twenty-five mile an hour speed zone. Uh, yesterday, the Kenner Police was, uh, receiving a, a complaint from me about the, the killing of animals while I was talking to a police officer. He had to leave because the car passed him so fast that he had to pull his car over. Now, I have asked, uh, what does the individual, like myself, I'm asking for a stop sign on the corner of Marquette and the East, uh, Loyola. They got all kind of flashing lights. They got everything. And they have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on a s- on a street that has a massive bend in it. If you look at the road, it's got a ma- and then you cross over Esplanade, it's a straight street with a twenty mile an hour speed limit. Okay, so they put as fast a speed limit on a street with a curve to start with, and then when you get across Esplanade, it's straight with a twenty mile an hour speed limit. And, uh, the thing that really, really bothers me is, I've talked about animals being killed, or ca- cars demolished. Three houses down from me, a car ended up in a lady's bedroom. It went through the house and into the bedroom because of the speeding that's going on at night. So, uh, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm asking for help from the council, because the police department said they can't do it by themselves. It has to be through you people that, uh, any help would come to control the speed on that street, because, uh, I don't want it to be a child, you know? Right now, we talk about animals, okay? But it could very easily be a child that could be hit on this street. Uh, and I just come to y'all and ask for help. Can anything be done to control the speed, you know, to get it to come down? Uh, and I, the Kenner Police, when they do have officers, they do put them there, but they don't ha- they can't live there, you know? So can anything be done by y'all, uh, on, on this issue right here?
Sure. Absolutely. Uh, Chief?
Yeah, so what I, what I commit to you, I'll do, is I'll meet with, uh, the administration and Public Works, and maybe do a traffic study to see if the, the issues you brought up could be, uh, rectified by either changing the speed limit or guardrail, no parking, some of the, something to that incidence. But, you know, we do get a lot of speeding complaints. We have upgraded our traffic division and, you know, try to get to, to, to them all, you know, the best we can. But, um, you know, I'll work with the administration and the council, Councilman, um, Brennan, and see what we can do maybe to, to change the, to reduce the speed. And if there, it'd all be based on a traffic study. That would give us probably the best-case scenarios.
Well, at least, uh, that's a start, okay?
Yes, sir.
That's a start, and all I'm asking is for some help.
We got you covered.
And I've been a, I've been a resident for Kenner for forty years right now, you know, and, uh, I, I just asking for some help.
Yes, sir. We got you covered. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Brennan? Oh. Mr. Richard, you have the podium.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Richard Brown, I live in District Four. Um, first off, I wanna say I'm excited about the improvements to Megas Park and to Anthony's Playground that, that Parish Councilwoman Rita Bohannon is doing. Uh, I'm part of the group that helps to take care of Megas Park. I'm the one who keeps the, uh, the doggy poop bag container filled, and, uh, if you ever see it empty, I'm the one to call. Um, but I'm looking forward to these improvements. And they should be completed in time for our spring festival and Easter egg hunt, which will be Saturday, April twelfth, and we'll say more about that later. Stacy Alessandro may want to announce it. She's in charge of that project. Uh, but there'll be another council meeting between now and then, and we may also be reaching out to you councilmembers for a little financial support, 'cause we do not charge the children, and we can't do this for nothing, but we try to keep the cost down. And the last point is, I'm glad to hear that the grass cutting contracts do require the grass cutters to clean up after they cut. I don't care whether they bag their clippings. I don't care how they clean up. They can come along later and clean up, as long as they do it. That's fine. We appreciate it. And thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Ms. Stacy?
Hello. So, um, since Mr. Brown mentioned, I'll just briefly say that we are gonna have our annual, this will be our second annual spring fling at Megas Park. It's gonna be April twelfth from noon to three. Um, we just started advertising. Everybody is welcome to attend. I will be sending out welcome letters to each one of you guys individually, administration, councilmembers, just to attend. Um, and, you know, we were always looking for help, so if anybody feels like they have anything, even if it's just soft drinks, you know, water, ca- a bag of candy, it's really whatever, you know, you wanna donate. If not, it's fine. Um, we do have very generous donation from Councilwoman Rita Bohannon already. Um, but anyway, my, my two quick questions are, well, one is a comment. That light on East Loyola Drive, when you finally get to Loyola, that light is so long, it, you have to wait an excessively long time for it to change. And then when it does change, so many people have been, have built up their waiting, there's not enough time. It's too short to let those people go. So I don't know if there's any way, maybe, y'all could just maybe take a look at it, maybe possibly adjusting that if possible. And Loyola?
East Loyola.
Mm-hmm. And then, um, I have a question maybe for the mayor. Um, I know this is a state project, I think, but, um, veterans going westbound, turning northbound onto Williams. Do we have a, like, any idea when that's gonna be a hundred percent complete?
Yes, I'd like to know that. I'd like to know, too.
That's, believe it or not, that, that extra lane westbound on vets to turn to northbound Williams is part of the ongoing Williams Boulevard Improvement Project. Uh, the project is, right now, if you drive there, don't drive there tomorrow or Sunday, because they're gonna have some lane closures. They working on the traffic signals. Hopefully, that lane should be open within a month. This weekend, they're gonna be working on the traffic signals. Those traffic signals out there right now, they are on wire, okay? They're gonna be transferred to the mast arm this weekend. So you're gonna have a number of lane closures out there at that same intersection. But to answer your question, that extra lane should be open probably within the next thirty, forty-five days. And that overall project is expected to be completed in May.
So, thank you. So are we only waiting for the traffic signals to be put in, and then it's complete? I mean, forty-five days to-
They were-
There's just so many days that nobody's out there working.
That, you know, and, and again, you're right. It's a DOTD project. It's a state route. And I asked the same question, why can't that extra lane be open? And they felt like it was a safety problem, a liability problem, and they requested a letter from us to accept liability, and they would open the lane, and we would not give them that letter, to accept liability for anything that may happen out there while that extra lane is open. So, uh, but no, it's part of the project. Hopefully, you know, everything is gonna be transferred within the next thirty or forty days, and that extra lane is gonna be, is gonna be open.
It'll be nice when it finally does, but it just-
Yes, it will.
Seems like they're taking their sweet time.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Well, a- as you probably heard us say, most of the delay for several months were the concrete supports for the mast arms kinda didn't pass, and they had to rethink it and, or reconstruct it. And they, they said that what they have there now will sus- sustain the load, so will support the load. So that's why they started working again.
That was a six-weeks delay, right there, waiting for it to get approved.
Three and a half months.
All right.
While we're on the DOTD, Mr. Gonzalez, do we have any Phase Two or Phase Three on Williams Boulevard going from west es- from West Metairie to Airline? Do you know of any projects that's out there?
I can tell you, yes.
Not as complex as what we have between West Metairie and I-ten. Uh, yes, Williams Boulevard is a state route. There is a Phase Two coming up in the future, and there is a Phase Three. Phase Two, in all likelihood, is gonna be the resurfacing of Williams Boulevard between, uh, Airline Drive and West Metairie. And Phase Three is gonna be the resurfacing of Williams Boulevard between Thirty-second Street and Jenny Boulevard. But they come in a year or two down the line. This is all gonna be paid with state money. So that would be Phase Two and Three a year or two from now.
I know DOT's, these thinking here, they don't want crossings out on the medians and all, so that's why they wanna put some U-turn lanes and all. Do you know what they're, they're going to be tearing up the median or anything like that?
Phase Two, from what I hear, Phase Two and Three, okay, will be strictly the resurfacing of Williams Boulevard. No J U turns like they did-
Yeah.
-between Thirty-second and Vintage a couple of years ago.
That's good news. Thank you. Anyone else? Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned?